Thank you. I'd like to welcome to the table this evening Mr. Richard Gussenberg, interim superintendent for our region and our new student representatives Erin Dorsey and Nicholas Lucatino. Am I pronouncing that right? And he prefers to be called Nick. So you may go ahead with your report.
Hello, everyone. I am Erin and both Nick and I are super excited to be here this year. We hope for a great year of us presenting to you the news at Pom Rock High School. So the first matter of business is that many of you might have heard that on the Smarter Balance Assessment that we took last year, our schools scored number one in the state in language arts and number four in math. And Nick and I were both students who took this test. So we're super glad that we managed to score that high. Also, we have a new schedule this year. We have -- our old schedule is sort of split among two days. We have extended blocks and we only have four academic blocks a day. Lots of students enjoy this. We think that it's a lot less rushed throughout the day. I mean, we get a lot more time to do our homework and it's more flexible for doing certain things and it's just an overall less stressful schedule. However, there have been some problems with the organization of study halls. Originally, in the beginning of the year, students were put into either the cafeteria or the AP room for their study hall and this caused some problems with students wanting to have a more quieter place to study. But Mr. Lungarini has worked with students and now students are allowed to go to the media center or other places to have a more quiet study. And that's definitely more flexible for students and we're looking ways to improve that even further. But most of all, everybody's just excited for the change. We're all accepting and excited to have new things at Pom Rock High School. So yeah, it's a really cool change to the school and we definitely think it's improved how we do work. Also, the Fall Black Box Play here at Pom Rock has been casted. It has around a dozen cast members and it's going to be held in the black box. It is called Lockdown and it's by Julie Edwards and it's about a couple of kids trapped in their school library during the school lockdown. And they are performing two weekends in November, from the 13th to the 15th, and then from the 20th to the 22nd. So as we come closer to that date, we'll tell you a little bit more about that and maybe a couple of class members. Also, we have a redesigned media center this year. We used to have a bunch of desktops in rows in the middle of the media center and we removed that and replaced it with a mobile Chromebook cart. And Chromebooks, for those of you who don't know, are basically laptops with Google Chrome on them. And we also have Student Chromebook Geniuses, as they're called, and they manage the cart, they monitor it and make sure students leave their passes when taking out netbooks, Chromebooks. And they also help solve tech problems. And a lot of students are using this to get hours for honor society. So it's really great to see students helping each other with these Chromebooks. And also really having these mobile laptops helps make the media center more mobile and more open to collaboration. Also, an exciting thing happened this weekend, which was a Yale Invitational Tournament that the Pom Rock Debate Team went to. We sent three teams, which included one sophomore and five seniors, myself one of them, and it included 250 students from all across the United States. We had teams from New York and California and we even had a team from Quebec, Canada. So it was a huge tournament with a lot of really excellent debaters. And it's a one-day tournament for most teams and then if you qualify, if you score high enough, you can move on to the second day. And I'm happy to say that I was part of one of the teams that moved on to the second day and we were the first Pom Rock team to do this. So we're really excited about our accomplishment, even though we didn't really win anything the second day. We were happy to have done that among such prestigious debaters. Also, a Pom Rock High School junior named Daniel Kay was accepted to the National Association for Music Education in their 2015 All-National Chorus. And that's very exciting for him because he will get to perform at the Grand Old Opera House in Nashville on October 25th to 28th. And he is among selected high school students from all across the state to receive this honor. So of course, he's a very talented singer and that's very exciting for him. Now on to Nick to talk about other things.
Good evening, everyone. As custom in late August, the Pom Rock Link Crew held their annual freshman orientation in dance and it was a great success and helped, you know, really helped to connect the underclassmen with incoming freshmen, I'm sorry, upperclassmen with incoming freshmen. Open house took place on October 9th. It was a very positive night with approximately 700 parents in attendance. Several clubs and organizations took part in the event as well. As part of the schedule this year, all students have a daily built-in advisory block, which lasts roughly 30 minutes. This time is being utilized for many different purposes and so one way it's being used is to hold class-wide meetings, which allows entire grade levels to kind of get together and work on something. So for example, recently, college applications were worked on. We learned about college applications in that time. It's also used as a time where students and staff can kind of meet together and talk and really make relationships without academic stress. A big push this year also has been the utilization of Google Classroom. So for anyone that's unfamiliar with the program, it is connected with a student's Region 15 Gmail account and it allows the teachers to connect with the students outside of the classroom so they can hold discussions, upload assignments, and create take-home tests and quizzes that the students can take through the site. It's been especially useful this year as we switch to block scheduling and then, so it's nice because you don't meet your teacher every single day. So it's nice to have somewhere online where you can go and meet with them and connect with them. And it's also great if you're absent from a class because then you can log in and check on it after and check what you missed. So now just have a quick update on our sports. All our teams have had a great season so far, a great start to the season so far. Field hockey's won two out of three games and their next game is this Thursday at home. Boys soccer has a 1-2 record, but they're trying hard to win tonight's game against Massacre and girls soccer is also playing Massacre tonight. The volleyball team is off to a great start at 3-0. Their next match is on Friday at Joel Barlow. And the football team has had a rocky start, but has had great support from the student body. Their next game is at home on Friday against Bethel. Both boys and girls cross-country are doing well and have a meet this Tuesday at Massacre. And boys and girls swimming and diving teams have also been very successful so far. And their next meet is Friday at home against New Wilford. Upcoming events on October 9th, the PTO and school administration will be sponsoring a field day with an emphasis on acceptance for all students. And on behalf of the students at Pom Rock, we would like to congratulate Mr. Jennings for being nominated state semifinalist for Teacher of the Year, as well as Mr. Firamida for being presented with a Centennial Medal Award by Philadelphia University. He was nominated by a former Pom Rock student and was honored for his work as a teacher of the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thorough, very thorough report. Any questions of the student representatives?
I just want to say, I was very happy to hear about your perspective on the new scheduling and also the use of technology and how you're using it in school. So I would be happy to hear more of that as the school year progresses. I was wondering, Erin, you mentioned that students were able to get hours for honor society. I don't know what that means.
Well, basically, we have a lot of honor societies at the school that do service projects and members of these honor societies have to complete a certain number of hours of service. And so, for example, NHS, they have to complete 40 hours of service. So students might spend an hour at the Genius Station, monitoring the netbooks, and then they would get an hour of service for that for their honor society. That's basically what it is. Does that make sense? I'm sorry.
Monitoring netbooks.
Well, there's a cart and there's a bunch of different laptops in it and...
They're like watching.
Yeah. And in order for students to check them out, they have to drop off their passport, like with the number of the netbook that they've taken out so they can make sure that like nobody walks away with anything.
I understand.
Any other questions?
Just one. If you have a study hall and/or an advisory every day, does that mean every calendar or like every two days because it's a block schedule or does it literally mean like every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Advisory is every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, where study halls are going to rotate between your Day A or Day B, which are going to be every other day.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on, presentations. Mrs. Bosford.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. Mr. Gussenberg has already been welcomed, but I would like to introduce him for the members of the public who have not yet had the opportunity to meet him. Mr. Gussenberg returns to us again after a long and distinguished career in Region 15 and also after serving as Long Meadow Elementary School's first principal and then last year as its interim principal. And he is now, of course, here with us as interim assistant superintendent. And Rich, we welcome you officially and we are delighted to have you here with us. It is also my pleasure to introduce Ms. Mary Lou Torrey. Mrs. Torrey is now serving as the interim principal at Gainfield Elementary School. She comes to us with experience as an elementary principal and a strong background in special education. So I'd like her to stand up so everybody can welcome her.
Thank you for having me. I'm just pleased to be here with you and it's my pleasure to meet families and students and staff. I hope you're all having a great start. Thank you.
And also with us tonight to be introduced to members of the Board of Education and to parents and members of the public at home, Ms. Nicole Vebert. Nicole is our new chairperson for English and Social Studies at Pom Rock High School. She comes to us with experience in West Hartford and she is another valued member of our administrative team. So Nicole, please.
I just want to say, having you here today, I've got a very good story about something that happened earlier today.
Nicole, if you're going to tell a story, come tell us at the mic, okay?
Okay. And I went up over here. I walked into the teacher coffee room earlier today and looked and a big smile on my face and said, "Good morning." And everyone just sort of looked at me. Then I watched and realized it was 3:45. And so Heidi's nasty, laughing back there. She was in the room when I did that and she said, "That's the dog." So maybe that's great. So the time is flying, love you every second of it. And I was thinking, we got the words, I'm here, Heidi, I'm here.
Great. And finally, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Brian Jennings. Brian has already been congratulated and I will reiterate that Brian not only is Region 15's Teacher of the Year for 2016, but he is also a semifinalist in the state of Connecticut. We are delighted to have him representing all that is fine and wonderful and professional about the teaching staff in Region 15. Brian is a science teacher at Pom Rock High School. He also serves as a dean. He is integrally connected with the Digital Learning Academy, with the Link Crew. Yes, I knew that from his T-shirt, which had a beautiful motto for the Link Crew and the Student of the Month Committee. He is also the familiar voice of the Pom Rock High School football team when they are at home. So Brian, you bring your unique talents to all that you do. You are a student-centered teacher and you model the highest dedication level and the highest level of caring for our students. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, everyone. Glad to have you today. I just want to say, it still is very humbling and I'm very honored to be the Region 15 representative of the State of the Year this year. As Mrs. Bosford...
Thank you very much. It's always difficult to be number five. That's the way I'm going to look at you, you're number five. You didn't make the top four. Okay, moving on, approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th? Boy, we're going way back. Okay, you want to do that?
I agree.
Yeah, we could do the March 17th, March 19th, and April 6th, special meeting, Budget Workshop Minutes. Could I have a motion for that, John?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 17th, March 19th, and April 6th, special meeting.
Any corrections, omissions?
I just want to say, I'm glad to see these draft minutes come forward. I did notice that on them, the board's divided into two parts, the present and the also-present. And I'd like to suggest a correction, that all board members be listed under present. And then there's also present.
Oh, yeah.
And that's true with all three of the sets. So that's my one correction to them.
Okay. Rich, Richard, did you have anything?
They weren't ready. There was some discussion on, do budget workshops require minutes or don't they require minutes? And that got resolved. The answer being is they are required. And then I think that was resolved in May or June and then we just got to the summer and now we're putting them on there. But budget workshops will have minutes as required by FOI.
Okay. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th regular board meeting?
Oh, we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have, as corrected, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay. Okay, a motion to approve the June 8th regular meeting, please.
Motion to approve the June 8th regular meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, omissions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes. And a motion for the June 16th special meeting.
Motion to approve the June 16th special meeting.
Is there a second? Any questions? Omissions? Okay. Gretchen, you will note that, okay. So those will stand corrected with Richard's name being omitted. All those in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay, could I have a motion for the September 15th, 2015 special meeting?
Motion to approve the September 15th special meeting.
Is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay. Okay, a motion to approve the June 8th regular meeting, please.
Motion to approve the June 8th regular meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, omissions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes. And a motion for the June 16th special meeting.
Motion to approve the June 16th special meeting.
Is there a second? Any questions? Omissions? Gretchen, you will note that, okay. So those will stand corrected with Richard's name being omitted. All those in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay, could I have a motion for the September 15th, 2015 special meeting?
Motion to approve the September 15th special meeting.
Is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Information and proposals, board committee reports, Finance and Facilities Committee, Mr. Babrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on September 9th. The 2000, we went over quite a few items, so I'll try and be as brief as I can, but I'd like to at least let everyone know what we went over. The 2015-16 Financial Report was reviewed. It was too premature to comment at this point since the school year just started. Concerns regarding excessive budget overruns in the area of special education have caused the issuance of a freeze on spending at this time. The special education, or S-P-E-D, overruns will be discussed later in my report. The following summer projects have been completed as planned. The RMS roof repairs are completed. Retubing of the boilers has been completed. Our football and soccer field has new artificial turf and it has been installed. The track material, which is an EDPM, won't be available until later this month, at which time the track itself will be replaced. A variety of other budget maintenance items have been completed on time. The following summer technical projects have also been completed. The 1,100 PCs and Chromebooks have been purchased and distributed. The Internet backbone access upgrade amongst our schools has been also completed. There were two major issues that we also discussed. The first of those issues, there appeared to be a misrepresented information regarding parking fees shown on Facebook. In order to clear up the misinformation, the Finance Committee addressed the issue once again regarding student parking fees. Parking at our high school is a privilege, not a right. We are required to provide and do provide seats on school buses for every student entitled to busing. The Board of Education, by providing student parking, recognizes that additional expenses are added to our budget and it is our responsibility to recover as much as possible of that additional cost borne by the taxpayer. To that end, the existing fees and rates, having been established a few years ago, remain in effect with no change. Current student parking fees are at the rate of $250 per school year, which breaks down to $1.38 per school day. The Board of Education is responsible for parking lot maintenance, snow removal, insurance, and security. We currently have 264 parking spaces that are reserved for student parking, with 46 of those spaces held in abeyance for snow removal. They are assigned on a first-come, first-served basis. If a student elects to provide their own transportation, then the cost to do so is their responsibility. The second major issue that we discussed was special education. Our special education, or S-P-E-D, is currently $400,000 in the red. We are $738,555 over current budget. This has caused us to apply a freeze on all non-essential spending. It's a shame that such actions needed to be taken at the very beginning of the budget year. State reimbursements cannot be counted on to help offset this large financial issue. Budgeting is almost impossible since the known student population requiring special education and the severity of that education is always in a state of flux. Most taxpayers are unaware of the issues revolving around S-P-E-D or special education. To that end, I will be requesting a special presentation at one of our BOE meetings to better inform the taxpayers, news reporters, and hopefully our state politicians of the severe financial consequences facing all boards of education throughout Connecticut with the increasing costs of providing S-P-E-D. Our meeting concluded at 8:00 PM. That is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Babrick? Okay, moving on, policies and curriculum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A week from tonight, Monday, September 28th, at 6:15 PM is the school year's first policy and curriculum meeting. I invite all the board to attend. Item three on the agenda relates to two items on the district's five-year curriculum review cycle. One of them is the middle school study. Well, actually, the agenda item will be a follow-up. That work was done last year for the middle school study and continues into this year. We have the middle school principals that will be in attendance with Mr. Gussenberg to make that presentation. And then there will also be an agenda item on the overview of social-emotional learning here at Region 15. You might think of that as health and wellness and guidance. And that, the beginning of that study, that study starts this year. So those will be discussed next Monday at 6:15 and I invite the whole board. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Other committee reports, PTO Advisory Council, Mrs. Conley.
PTO Advisory Council did have their first meeting. Lots of new faces. Mrs. Bosford updated the group on all the improvements and changes made at our schools over the summer and everyone's looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments? There being none, I'll move on. Superintendent's report.
The first item on the agenda is the opening of school report. I am delighted to report that we opened all schools very successfully on September 1st to almost 4,000 students. The hallways and the floors were shining, the faces were shining and smiling, and only a few criers were noted and none of them were adults. Mr. McLiberty, Mr. Gussenberg, and I spent the first day of school circulating to all of the buildings, enjoying the presence of our children and young adults in their classrooms. We visited all schools the first day and then again later in the week. A very, very positive opening to school this year. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes preparation for the opening of school, certainly in facilities and technology, some of which Mr. Babrick mentioned, as well as in the preparation of staff. We are especially pleased to be using this year new math materials in grades K to 3. These have garnered a lot of enthusiasm from students and teachers and parents. We've received a mention of appreciation as we traveled through the buildings and I certainly want to thank the board for supporting this effort and to thank the public for approving the budget, which included the necessary funds to do this. And just to give you a little bit of a picture, if you will, into what this looks like. Here we have, this is a first-grade classroom. This is called the Number Corner. And as you can see, this is a, it's a calendar. It happened to be September 16th when I was in the school. And what you will see there are different models for different numbers. So if we look at September 3rd, it might be a little bit hard to see, but you can clearly see a visual of 3 as an odd number. You can clearly see a visual on September 6th of 6 as an even number. You can see a visual of September 10th as a 10 being two groups of 5. On September 12th, as a 12 being a group of 10 and two more and so on. So you get the idea. Very important in helping kids develop number sense and flexible ways of dealing with number. And I have just a few more because I knew you would really be as excited to see this as we all were. Here we have again from first grade, nickels and pennies. And so you see that already on the first and second week of school, the children were counting out coins and then that certainly looks like children's handwriting to me, writing the notation for the amount of the dollar value or the cent value of the coins. And here we have sums to 5, different ways to make a 5, notice without the formal notation, and ways to make a 10, called top and bottom, which then gets refined into the formal notation of the sum and the addend and so on. Just great fun. And in this one, we have a model of, it's a little easier to see if you look at the bottom. That's two squares of 10 making 20. And what was being discussed that day was we have a picture model of 16 in here. It's a little hard to see because of the color, but that's a group of 10 and then six more ones. So 16 is pictured as a group of 10 and six ones. And the question here sure looks to me like it was, how many more do we need to make the whole group, which is the 20? And getting ready, and you know, when you ask that question and when you show things in such an intuitive way, anybody's going to be able to look at that and say, "I could just see, you need four more to make that 20." And of course, where we will be going is making the bridge to the how many more actually being subtraction, right? So another way to think about a missing addend is a subtraction. So there you go. We all passed first grade. Thank you very... Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Gussenberg, who is going to share some information about staff preparation for the opening of school, and then to Mr. McLiberty, who will review facilities and technology projects, if there are any that weren't covered by Mr. Babrick.
My very first report. We had a wonderful opening. As Regina mentioned, we were able to get out to the schools on the first day and several days since then, in and out of classrooms, and we've seen lots of smiling faces, lots of very positive teachers. They seem to feel that we have laid a good foundation for this school year. Before the school year began, we had several different activities that went on. We did a two-day administrative retreat. We did a full day, what's called ITL. We did a full day, what's called I T L, our Instructional Teacher Leaders, met with me for an entire day. And the focus of both of those days was on 21st-century skills. How do we take a look at our curriculum? How do we make sure that the learning that's going on is deep learning? And particularly focusing on areas such as critical thinking skills within the school district? How do we ensure that students are involved with real, authentic work? And how do we measure that work? Since that time, I've met with various adminis, or not administrative groups, curriculum groups in math and literacy, and we've begun to board down and dig in a little bit on some of the tasks and activities that we want to do. We've begun to take a look at some of the assessments that we've been using in the region with a, a direction from me in terms of making sure that the time that we spend on assessment is well-used time that is going to drive the instructional program. You know, you, assessment is good, but that doesn't necessarily mean that lots of assessment is better. We want to make sure that the assessments that are there are there because they're important to the learning process and that they give the teachers the data and information that they need to ensure a good differentiated program for every single student. So we're taking a close look at each of those as we meet with the various groups, and so far, each of those groups, as I said, has been extremely positive. As Steve mentioned earlier, we've begun several different activities. We're beginning to take a close look at the middle school. There was a detailed study done last year. We're going to be doing a more detailed report and conversation with P and C on Monday in terms of the work that we're going to do this year, which takes a look at our middle school and the offerings that it has, the schedule that it has, to make sure that it is organized and structured to provide the very best program we can. We're taking a look at the Social-Emotional Developmental Guidance Program, and that will come out with some information at the end of this year. I personally am focusing a lot on communication. I'm trying to get regular emails out to all the staff, minutes of all the meetings, and get around to the building so that everybody feels that they have a stake in some of the changes that are taking place. And the message that we've given them is that we want to do a small number of things and do them well, rather than throw too much on the table all at one time. You know, I heard from teachers, we really want to have it, have time to hone our skills, to develop some expertise in some of the new initiatives that have come out the last couple of years, and we can't do that if we try to do too much at one time. So that's where we're at right now. It's been an extremely positive year. I truly enjoyed working at Central Office and working with Regina and Keith and Jessica, and looking forward to the rest of the year. Thank you. Thank you. In addition to what Mr. Baberick mentioned, one of the primary goals in, in our last budget, which is the fiscal year we're in now, was computers and backbones. And, and over the summer, over 1,100 PCs, laptops, and Chromebooks were received, formatted, and, and deployed, and they are now out, out in the school district. In addition, the fiber optic cable, which is between the switches to give us the high-speed access that we need, is, is also completed. Keep in mind, the last phase that we all agreed to we would do between now and December, once we hear from the state on the grant, would be the actual access points. So, so the I T department stepped up, and it was a busy summer, and, and they got those two primary objectives completed. So we're just waiting now to hear from the state on the, on the grant. Should we be awarded the grant, then we will go into the access points. But the backbone is complete, and the devices are received and deployed and now being used now out in the schools.
May I move on to the next piece, which is student and staff accomplishments, unless there are any questions or from the Board?
I just have a question. When are we supposed to hear about that grant?
I'll preface it with, this is from the state of Connecticut, so don't hold your breath.
I know.
But it's supposed to be in October, November.
Okay.
Now, what comes, what becomes concerning is, we received an email Friday on the governor's budget cuts and how he's going to cut almost every town and school district in the state to achieve his goal of, of a $20 million reduction. So we don't know how that's going to play. They're also talking about cutting excess costs. So frankly, I'd rather they not cut us, excess costs and cut technology, but, but that's why we're here, they're there.
Just to acknowledge some significant accomplishments of students and staff. Mel McVary is a physical education teacher at Longmeadow Elementary School. She's also a Middlebury resident, and she was chosen as Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year for the entire state of Connecticut. So congratulations to Mel. It was also mentioned earlier, Mr. Floran Fieramita, P H S art teacher, received the Centennial Medal Award from Philadelphia University. Congratulations to him. And Holly Bishop, Memorial Middle School music teacher, spent the summer teaching orchestral music to girls in Afghanistan at the National Institute of Music. So congratulations to Holly, and a special thank you to her for bringing that experience back to our students as she is doing this year. Newsweek came out with their most recent high school ranking. They placed Pomperock High School as number 12 in the state. The Connecticut State Department of Education identifies 204 high schools in Connecticut, and that puts us in the top 6 percent. And as you heard announced earlier, and as you have likely seen in the newspaper, we have received the Smarter Balanced test results for students in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11. Smarter Balanced, as you know, is a new, more rigorous test than the previous C M T and CAPT that used to be given. We are in the process of doing what's called a data drill-down. It's examining the data, and a full-board report will be given at a future point. For the parents who are at home or in the audience, we are waiting to receive individual student reports in various forms from the state. Some pieces are in, some pieces are not. Once we have all the materials from the state, which the state says that they will get, get them to us by October, then we will be able to send them home. Okay, that's student and staff accomplishments. Next item, unless the Board has any questions? Next item on my portion of the agenda is the parent survey, and I'll pull this up. And for those of you, for those of you in the audience, if it's difficult to see on the screen, there are paper copies at, at the head table where you walked in. So the Board has received this background information. This is a, a data summary from the parent survey that was conducted last spring. We had, and I'll scroll down for a second so that you can see some of the information down here. We had a total of 1,146 responses. Overall, there was a very, very positive response with, if you look at item number 21, I think it is, overall satisfaction and overall satisfaction rate of 91 percent. I'll scroll back up so you can see the columns. The total agreement was either strongly agree or agree. The total disagreement was strongly disagree or disagree. And then there was a, the last column is either don't know or neither agree nor disagree. Okay, just to sort of lay that out. And let me go back up to the top. There we go. It is, it is important to note that on some questions, there was a sizable percentage of respondents who said that either they did not know or neither agreed nor disagreed. So it's important to take that into consideration when we look sometimes at the results. 29 percent on this question. The questions on the bottom portion are questions that were required by the state. We did not write these questions. They were given to us by the State Department of Education. And you'll see in there some very, some quite high percentages of parents who said either they didn't know or neither agreed nor disagreed. So it's something important to keep in mind when we look at the results. And of course, the principals review their school data, and they adjust practices based on the feedback received. We have been doing parent surveys now for, I believe this is the second year, my memory is serving me correct. And last year, we worked on quite a number of topics. Some of them were teacher communication, developing supportive relationships with adults in school, bus behavior. This year, we are all working on students treating each other with respect. That, that is what we are working on in all of our schools. And as was mentioned earlier, we are also doing a complete review of our social-emotional learning program. So that, that's the information on the parent survey.
On the state-required questions, does the state provide some sort of average of what the whole state looks like so that we compare our responses to that in any way?
I don't, I do not think so. Have we seen anything? We haven't seen anything.
And I guess the, the other thing I want to, this made me pull out my 40 assets testing that the students answered questions, and I'm wondering if, if you go back to that and look for any alignment or, you know, because the student's perspective may be different than the parent's perspective as you're, as you're planning. I'm wondering if, if this is of any value at this point in time?
That, that 40 assets data, I believe is a number of years old. I, I don't have the date in front of me.
Or, I'm sorry, 2011?
2011, okay. Thank you for your suggestion. And just a few pieces of information about some upcoming agenda items. Under new business, which is number four on your agenda, sorry, under new business, which is number nine on your agenda, item number four is calling for the Board to take action on approval of the Educator Evaluation and Professional Development Plan. This plan was approved as is required by the State Department of Education first, and now comes to the Board for its approval. Okay. In numbers five and six in that same section, the Board will be voting on the approval of a long-term district goal for students to demonstrate the 21st-century skills as follows: collaboration, critical thinking, communication, innovation, and global citizenship. So the Board is acting for the very first time to set a long-term educational goal for our students. It's a goal that educates our students for their future, and I thank the Board for being so forward-thinking as to bring this forward for action at this meeting. So over the next, over the future years, we will be working on these kinds of ideas. So these are the questions, as this is a long-term goal. It is a goal that will be with us for a good number of years, moving us forward into the future. And what we will do is, we will work on specific goals in this first year. The focus will be on critical thinking. That does not mean that we ignore the other areas as well, because indeed, a lot of good work is happening in the other five areas also. But the particular emphasis in this first year coming up will be in critical thinking, and we will be looking at, working on the kinds of questions that are presented here. How can we understand what the learner expectations mean? How can we communicate them to all of our constituents, to students, to parents, to the public? What do these learner expectations look like in the classroom? How do we know critical thinking, for example, when we see it? How can we assess when the student has achieved a satisfactory level of critical thinking or innovation? How do we know when we have reached success? And what are the instructional implications? If these are the six areas that we say we value, and the Board will be voting tonight to decide if it is the Board's determination that these are the six areas that we value going forward? These are certainly not new things, but what is new is a clear and deliberate focus on them to take us, to take our students and their education forward into the future. And what then would be the instructional implications going forward? Again, it's long-term work. It's very exciting work, and I really want to thank the Board for bringing this, bringing this up for a vote. So I thank you very much for that. And the last piece is the personnel report that the Board has received. It has all the personnel actions since the Board last met on June 8th. So it's a rather lengthy report. And that's it. Any questions of the superintendent? Okay, there being none, I'll move on. Comments from citizens? Okay, no comments. We have no old business, but we have plenty of new business. I need a motion to approval of the healthy food certification.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Finance and Facilities Committee, approves the healthy food certification statement as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the 2015-16 out-of-district transportation bid.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Finance Committee, approves the 2015-16 out-of-district transportation bid as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the transfer for kindergarten through grade-three elementary textbooks.
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation by the Finance Committee, approves the transfer for kindergarten through grade-three elementary textbooks as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the 2015-16 Educator Evaluation and Professional Development Plan. Could I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Education approves the 2015-16 Educator Evaluation and Professional Development Plan as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, approval of the district goal statement. Could I have a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approves the district goal statement as follows: Students will demonstrate the Region 15 learner expectations of collaboration, critical thinking, communication, innovation, global citizenship, and character as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I'd like to just say one thing.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I just would like to thank Mrs. Botzford for presenting this goal for the Board of Education. I know that you worked very hard in putting it together, and I felt like you needed to have a drum roll when you talked about this, because I think it's a really exciting step that the Board of Education is taking in providing a direction to many of our meetings. And we are showing how invested we are in student achievement in this district and focusing on these learner expectations that you have pointed out for us. And I also want to add that I also appreciate that, you know, you were looking at this throughout the summer, and you also added character. And I think that's- And I think that that's also a very important part to student achievement, and I'm very excited that we are going to be hopefully approving this district goal. So thank you.
Okay. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the superintendent's 2015-16 goals. Could I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Education approves the superintendent's 2015-16 goals as presented to support the following district goal: Students will demonstrate the Region 15 learner expectations of collaboration, critical thinking, communication, innovation, global citizenship, and character.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Is this a question, Madam Chair? Because it mentions as presented, and I just, for clarification, when we talked about them in the workshop last week, there were metrics that were presented. Are these referring to those metrics?
Yes, it refers to exactly what was discussed at the workshop, and I gave a general description for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you.
Will that page that Steve is referring to be published online so that it's clear
Oh. If that's what the board is requesting, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think they should be at least in the minutes, that there's a reference point in the future. Please.
All in agreement? You are so. That is your task. Okay. Announcement of future meetings. Monday, September 28th, Policies and Curriculum will have their meeting at the High School Media Center Conference Room at 6:15. Monday, October 5th, Board of Education meeting at Pomperock High School All-Purpose Room, 103, at 7:30. Wednesday, October 14th, Finance and Facilities Committee Central Office at 5:30. Monday, October 26th, Policies and Curriculum Committee, Pomperock High School Media Center Conference Room at 6:00 p.m. And Monday, October 26th, Board of Education meeting at the High School, the All-Purpose Room, at 7:30 p.m. Could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Motion, Madam Chair.
No, I mean, that's still in the works. But these will be, these will be board goals, which were different than what we voted on tonight, as far as I know. And I'll let you know. We're working with the facilitator, so I need to get that all organized. Okay, a motion to adjourn, please? Oh, it's already done? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you. Good night. Okay. Okay.